Welcome, everybody, to PEG's Fireside Chats with Candidates. So I'm Joyce Short, you all know that. And with me as our co-host is Ellen Pollavee, and you all know that as well. And our guest this evening is Rebecca Lamorte. And Rebecca started in politics back in 2011 when she was a student at Fordham University. And she worked with labor unions. And she worked on issues like land use and housing and wages and workforce safety and training and lots of good stuff. She is currently the Secretary of Community Board Eight. She serves on the Transportation and Housing Committees. She's on the Executive Committee of the East River Democratic Club. And she's a board member of Quality Services for the Autistic Community. She's a diehard Mets fan, but we'll forgive her. She lives in Yorkville. And she's also a member of the Labor's Local Seventy-Nine. So, welcome Rebecca. It's so nice to have you here this evening.
Thank you for having me. I'm so excited to be with all of you. Thank you for hosting this.
It's sincerely our pleasure. And Rebecca, can you tell me, other than what I've mentioned about you, can you tell us just a little bit more about yourself and in particular, why you actually got into politics? What motivated you?
Absolutely. So, growing up, my mother instilled the values of public and community service in me. Every election day, she would take us out of school and we would be out there fighting for true blue candidates from local races all the way up to the presidential. So my love of politics started at the kitchen table, where at the Lamorte family, it was a safe space to share your feelings, ask questions, and be actively engaged even as a young person in politics. So when I went to college, I majored in political science. And while there, I was lucky enough to get involved with the labor movement, starting at 20 years old, becoming a registered lobbyist and really fighting for people that wouldn't have a voice in government if it weren't for someone like myself being there and my allies in the labor movement. But put me on the path to stepping out in front and getting more political than ever was a 2013 subway accident that left me with a lifelong disability. You can't see it now, but when I'm out in the community, I walk with a cane. In 2013, I was pushed on the six train and my leg was crushed in the gap between the train and the platform. And it completely changed my life. It changed how I view our community, how I view our city, and how I wanted to fight not just for myself, but for others, for other disabled New Yorkers. Because if I, as a white woman with a lot of privilege and a lot of knowledge and connections within the city, if I was being discriminated against and if I was feeling overlooked and unseen and disrespected and just not cared for as a person with a disability, I kept thinking, what's happening to other disabled New Yorkers? What's happening to black women that are disabled? What's happening to seniors? Who's there to fight for them? And when the seat was opening up, I looked at the field and I'd love to build on Ben Kalos's great work and just inject more disability justice into the conversation. It's such an intersectional issue and it's something that's completely changed my life. And now I'm running so I can fight and change other people's lives as well for the better through this. So it was a very personal thing that put me on this path to running for office and getting more political than ever before.
Excellent. So now, you have a really outstanding platform. Can you tell us what the most important issues on your platform, the three most important for you, and what do you intend to do about them?
So our three campaign pillars are housing disability and economic justice, all of which are personal to me. I'm zooming in from my studio apartment in Yorkville. I'm a tenant, I'm a renter, just like all of you. And we don't have the affordable housing we need in our community. We're hemorrhaging affordable housing. So I want to fight for housing justice that protects the affordable housing we have, rent-controlled stabilized units. Our Mitchell Lamas in the neighborhood protects and revitalizes our public housing developments in the neighborhood and builds the affordable units we need. Disability justice, last week I put out a policy platform that touches on everything from transportation access to small businesses, getting grants from the city to increase their ADA access and compliance. And it's really an intersectional issue that I can speak about later on when we dive into the platform more. But disability justice is something I very much so look forward to getting the City Hall to work on in an intersectional way. And economic justice, I'm a proud union member of Labor's Local Seventy-Nine. Solidarity over my shoulder, it's an action word, it's not a noun. And we need to be sure that we're empowering local workers and supporting our small businesses. I employ so many New Yorkers as well. And they were under attack long before COVID. And COVID's really laid bare a lot of the economic inequality and the issues percolating under the surface for so long. And so I want to get to City Hall to be sure that we're empowering workers with strong wages. We're bringing new industries online that can employ New Yorkers and meet the needs of everyday New Yorkers in terms of childcare and education and transportation. And for small businesses, they're the lifeblood of our communities. My favorite places to go aren't CVS or Duane Reade, it's Schaller &amp; Weber, it's Nick's Pizza at Ninety-Fourth and Second, it's going to get my bagel at H&amp;H. And those are not big conglomerates, and we need to be sure we're protecting them as well. So those are the three big issues that I'll be focusing on down at City Hall.
Excellent. So at this point, I'm going to turn things over to my co-host Ellen Pollavee, who's got, I'm sure, lots of questions that we've collected from the community and from our PEG board. So take it away, Ellen.
Okay, you have to pass the torch.
Oh, I'm sorry. There you go. There you go. There you go. You got yours? There you go. Okay, we're ready.
Okay. Now, this terrorizes me every time I do this, so I'm now going to blow it out. Okay. My main question, I mean, besides how are you going to pay for it, which I'm going to ask you, but one thing I've been struggling with, because I also work with disabled people as a care manager, I've done that for 40 years. And the one problem that is totally vexing is housing for the disabled. I mean, but you find that SSI only pays, I mean, still only pays $800 and something dollars a month. And you can't even get housing, even, you can't even get disabled housing or senior housing or anything unless it's HUD housing, which has gone from the federal government. You can't get anything for $200 a month, which would be one quarter of your income, if your income is $800 a month. So what do people who are disabled do?
Right now, if you're getting Social Security benefits, you can't make more than $18,000 as a disabled New Yorker. There's one program that allows working disabled New Yorkers to make up to $64,000. But think, this is New York City. We all know that you can't live on that. That's not enough to support the market rate rents. And we're not building the deeply affordable housing that's needed at the levels that you're referring to, Ellen. So for me, when I speak about housing justice, it also includes disability justice, because we need to build the deeply affordable housing that disabled New Yorkers on these financial mechanisms and under this financial thumb from, unfortunately, the government. It is kind of government-engineered poverty, in my opinion, where you're telling a disabled New Yorker, you can't make more than this much, you can't get housing either. And if you go into the workforce, you're going to lose your benefits, you may not be able to support your medical care. So for me, it's about building deeply, deeply affordable housing below 30% of the area median income, below the poverty line, to be sure that we have the housing stock that's there, because right now, we just don't. And also, part of that housing stock, it has to be different kinds of housing. It can't just be studio apartments. If you need a caregiver that lives with you, we need to have larger units for that. Also, if you're a wheelchair user, we need to have bathrooms that can accommodate you. We can be sure we have the elevator access to all levels of the building, because so often, it will be the ground floor where you can get up to your apartment. But what if you need to take out the trash? What if you're trying to do laundry and you want that level of independence? So you're 100% correct. To live as a disabled New Yorker and find housing here is very difficult. Most people live with family members because they can't afford to strike out on their own, no matter how much they would like to. I spoke to a man this week that works for NBC Universal, doing amazing graphic design work for them. And he has to say no to raises, he has to say no to bonuses, he has to say no to promotions, because if he made more money, he would lose his benefits. And it costs him $200,000 a year for the medical care that he needs, just to live day to day. And it's unconscionable that the government is allowing this to be perpetuated, but the only way that changes is by getting more people elected that understand this and will lead with compassion and empathy to be sure that disabled New Yorkers and disabled Americans, quite honestly, are no longer forced to live in this cycle of poverty that just harms them, affects their physical health, affects mental health. And also, think about the dignity of life and the quality of life. If you can't get out there and really live as you want to, like so many of us just take for granted.
Last, like, three years ago, I went to a rally with Scott Stringer, who's now comptroller. And he's complaining that subways are not accessible. Now, I thought the comptroller would have some control over whether, you know, where the money goes, but apparently, he doesn't. It's just kind of like a job where he's keeping track of the money. So who does control where the money goes? And how would it get to the subways so that we could make them more accessible? And is that where we want to spend our money, since we don't have that much money in the city right now?
For me, absolutely yes. And I'm going to use my big buzzword, you're going to hear it a million times tonight, full warning, it's an intersectionality issue. Because, yes, we need these accessibility updates, we can also put people to work on these infrastructure updates through the MTA funding. And who controls the purse strings of the MTA sadly? Governor Cuomo. And we've heard about how he's rated that budget for other pet projects, like the Mariel Cuomo Bridge and other development he wants to do throughout the state. And that's why our subways are crumbling. That's why our signals are so old, they're from decades ago. That's why people were complaining long before COVID, you know, and then everyone stopped taking the subway and the MTA said, oh my gosh, we're not getting our MetroCard swipes now, we're really out of money. But for me, I thoroughly reject austerity budgets. I think the way that we need to not only get out of this COVID economic downturn is to spend more money and be very targeted in how we spend that money. So I want to see the state put forth a robust, multi-billion-dollar package. Yes, we'll need some money for the feds from the threads too, but with President Biden there, hopefully, we have a more friendly ear for funding like that, to take that money and have it directly earmarked for MTA, for things like signal upgrades, station accessibility. And I'm talking full accessibility. For example, in the neighborhood, we have some stations that are partially accessible. And to me, partial accessibility is not accessibility. And a really egregious example of that is the 86th Street Lexington Avenue stop. There's an elevator that takes you to the Uptown Six Train Platform, but that's it. If you're a disabled New Yorker, you have to take the train all the way up to 125th Street, get off, take multiple elevators, travel throughout the entire station to get to the downtown line, and then go about your business heading downtown into Lower Manhattan or wherever you need to go. And that's just unconscionable. And the only way to change that is to put money in the system and earmark it specifically for these updates. And yes, it will take a lot of money, but we can do that by bringing revenue to the state, through doing things like raising taxes on millionaires and billionaires. Data shows they made more money during COVID. And if we tax them a little bit more, they're still going to have millions and billions of dollars to spend. So it won't financially impact them, like so many other New Yorkers when you raise taxes on them. Also, getting creative with other revenue raisers, things like legalizing adult-use cannabis and taxing that, that could bring millions of dollars to the state. Passing legislation like a stock transfer tax, for example. So there are mechanisms out in the legislature right now, at this very second, that if passed, if implemented, would bring money online, automatically earmarked for the MTA, and then we can put that towards the accessibility updates that we need. Because also, another thing I'll add is that accessibility doesn't just impact disabled New Yorkers, it impacts all of us.
I've looked at your platform, and I don't see anything about the New York Health Act, which is in Albany right now, and we have a majority in Albany to pass it.
I support the New York Health Act. I'm fully supportive of it. Hopefully, this year with our supermajority and Andrew Cuomo taking some hits, maybe he'll realize he needs to actually legislate in a good faith way and not hold it up anymore. I will say, though, as a union member, I want to be sure that the needs of union workers are taken into account in conversations around the New York Health Act that have been happening up in legislatures in the past. And I've been up in Albany on behalf of my union, conversations haven't really taken route to take into account the strong benefits that a lot of union members already have, myself included, where we've bargained away raises to get this healthcare. And now, if we implement a public healthcare system, we're not going to get those dollars back in our flat wage. So we need to be sure that we're finding a way that takes into account the benefits that are already out there and holds employers accountable for if those benefits aren't needed anymore, to make sure that that money goes directly into people's paychecks, because workers have quite literally bargained away raises, dollar raises, $2 raises, $3 raises per hour, to be sure that they had healthcare and their families had healthcare. And it's something that could be at risk if we don't be sure that those conversations are had before we implement a fully public system. Also, again, my big word, intersectionality, having public healthcare would really help disabled New Yorkers as well. It's something I've spoken with a lot of them about. There would still need to be some kind of private market for people that have large quantities of care that are needed day to day, but it would just alleviate a lot of the burdens that they deal with for bickering. And I've even bickered with private insurance, going through my own healthcare issues with my disability. So it's something I'm very supportive of, and just want to be sure we have some union conversations before it's implemented.
Okay. The, you know, unfortunately, the unions have been actually a big impediment in getting this, you know, getting all the support that we need. So, you know, it would, it would be helpful to have your voice in having the unions come around to understanding that, you know, maybe they need to give something up. Yes, they did do an awful lot of bargaining, but to hold everybody else up from getting health, the healthcare that they need, you know, universal healthcare, is not, is actually not fair. And it ultimately doesn't help the unions, because you're getting suboptimal care right now, even, even from the unions. It, you know, even, even from the union care, which is some of the better cares that you can get, some of the better health plans, you're still getting suboptimal care, suboptimal care, because it's through private companies.
Mm-hmm. And also, I'll add to that too, to agree with your point, Ellen, that a lot, so I have a really great, robust healthcare plan through the laborers' union. It's all employer-funded, I'm very blessed, I go to the doctor, I don't need a referral, all I do is pay a co-pay, it's very stress-free. But there are a lot of union members that don't have that level of care. So moving to a public system would also increase the healthcare that they and their families are afforded. So it's, it's a difficult conversation to have, but like you're saying, myself is someone that has been inside and understands the issues on both sides and wants to see something done long-term that provides this healthcare for New Yorkers, also especially undocumented New Yorkers. To me, they need to be a part of this healthcare system, because before Trump, they were afraid to come out of the shadows and get a lot of the care they needed. And now, it's even more exacerbated because of the main tangerine, as I call him, who thankfully is now out of the White House. So, yes, I represent a unique role, or hopefully, we can bring all the parties together and make something beautiful happen on healthcare.
Right. And with the Medicaid?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, Medicaid and Medicare, big issue in the neighborhood now, a lot of hospitals are stopping taking it. So for example, if you're on Medicare and Medicaid right now, you have to go out of the district metropolitan hospital, if you live in my neighborhood, into East Harlem to get the care you need, because Hospital Alley, where we have some really great medical providers, they've stopped taking a lot of the Medicare and Medicaid plans, which disenfranchises so many seniors, so many working families and disabled New Yorkers.
Right. Right, exactly. Well, let's clarify, the Medicare Advantage plans.
Yes.
And only, and they'll only take you if you have the most, the best Medicare supplement plan. Have Medicare plus the best Medicare supplement plan, it's very, very complicated, very, I find it very ageist, and probably very, you know, anti-disabled also.
Yes, yes, it is. It's ageist and it's ableist, 100%.
Ableist is the word, I guess. All right. So, let's go to the expand, your idea of expanding American sign language, and let's talk about that. Because I've been fighting for heart operators before people with hearing aids and, and hard-of-hearing people. Not everybody wears hearing aids, but most older people have some, you know, some hard-of-hearing problem, some hearing dysfunction. And, and most, and many other people have hearing dysfunction. I think I had a hearing dysfunction since I was a young person, you know. And, you know, now that I'm, now that I'm older, wearing hearing aids, I can think back about how the things that I missed when I was in school and didn't realize that that was a hearing dysfunction. And it has helped if you could read subtitles. So I know I fought in city council, in the city council hearings for looping, because that also helps, but that, that doesn't help somebody who is totally deaf. However, the subtitles, unless you're illiterate, subtitles help everybody. So it would really help more people if you just had a card operator, rather than American sign language. So that's my, that's my.
I'm open to both. I see it as like, let's have all, let's not just choose one or the other from, so to put together my disability justice platform, I pulled together a group of disability advocates and organizers from across the country. Everyone from the Crypt the Vote team out in California, to people here in New York, to people up in New Hampshire, down in Miami, everywhere. It was a really cute Zoom where we all realized we had pets, so that was a fun moment too. But through those conversations, it was made clear that having the American sign language interpretation was a priority for deaf New Yorkers and the deaf community, to have that service there as a part of language access. And it's actually something that my campaign is now going to be taking on to ask the Campaign Finance Board to change their rules, because for all of the events that I host for my campaign, I have ASL interpretation there, so they can be fully inclusive. So we have captions, we have ASL, and also, there's some other accessibility needs that we fold in.
I did some basic computation on that. Do you, do you know how much it would cost to add that in?
Not for the total, because there are so many, like, if it's a subcommittee meeting versus a committee meeting and the individual community board meetings, there are dozens of meetings that happen all the time, so I don't have a full calculation of that.
Okay. So I estimated maybe $2 million just for ASL, for, you know, for a two-hour meeting every, every night of the week for board, for, for one community board at times 50, what is it, 59 that there are around the city? Yeah, I just, I did a rough calculation and I figured, I'm not very good, it's rough calculations, I, I figured about like a million and a half, I think that's what I came up with. And, and just with one, just with subtitles, but if you add subtitles, you know, with the card operator plus the, and I was thinking $30 an hour, so.
I just paid $2.50 a minute for ASL, so it is, yes, it is pricey. That's why we're going to be asking CFP to remove that rule, because it does, it, it's an impact, it's, it's a cost impact when you're under the spending cap.
So, here, here it goes. You're going to have to make choices in the city council on whether you fund that, or you fund the city park, or you fund the schools and, you know, just an extra disability, disabled class in the, in the public school, or an extra G and gifted and talented class in the public school, or less students in each class, you know? These choices have to be made. So I just want to bring it up, that things get a little bit more complicated than, yeah, let's give it all to, to the deaf people. Because, you know, what about, what about the other disabilities that also need things? So, you know, what about the children that are not going to grow up knowing how to read because they didn't get into a disabled class? Yeah, and so, I, you know, there's just so many choices that have to be made. Okay, what I want to know about is restorative justice. Rebecca, can you explain what restorative justice would look like in public safety for disabled New Yorkers?
Absolutely. So restorative justice, well, I'll start by saying that I want to completely reimagine public safety. I think the mechanism for public safety we have now is really flipped on its head. The root of what impacts people with policing, with criminal justice, where we lack restorative justice, are socioeconomic issues. So I want to be sure that we're empowering everyday New Yorkers with the housing support, mental health support, healthcare, education, job readiness and placement, those kind of day-to-day bedrock supports that really help New Yorkers thrive and avoid ever interacting with the criminal justice system. But outside of that, for restorative justice, I want us to build on the bail reform that's already been passed and move away from our carceral system as it exists right now, and look more towards rehabilitative processes. Some other countries have really whittled down their prison population. When you look at Sweden, for example, when you're incarcerated, you're taught a skill, you're paid, there's a dignity to your life, where you're not just locked up and we throw away the key. And that's where I want to see the United States and New York going towards. As a part of that, I did support closing Rikers, I didn't support opening up the five-borough based jails, because I think it moves us away from that restorative justice. If we're opening up more jails, we're going to need to fill them. Why would we spend money as a government? We don't have plans to put people there. And to me, that's moving us further away again from restorative justice, which empowers New Yorkers by saying, yes, you may have committed a crime, but we're here as your community to show you your place, why we want to see you succeed, how we can help you succeed. And this is actually work I've already done through my union. Before I transitioned to run full-time, I was leading a campaign that supported formerly incarcerated, unionized construction workers. And it really shows what happens when you have restorative justice and you end that cycle of recidivism, because through showing a formerly incarcerated person, here's a good job, where you can earn a solid wage, you have benefits, you have retirement security. And for us, it's the union family, but you have a family around you that wants to see you succeed, and it's here with the resources you need. That's the restorative justice I want to see us working towards. And I know it can happen, because I've been a part of these campaigns where it's been recognized, and I work with people that served a great deal of time, hard time, as some people refer to, and you would never know, because once someone comes home, if you say, I want to see you do well, and here's how I'm going to help you do well and support you with all of your day-to-day needs, like I said, housing, jobs, mental and physical health, transportation, education, that you can really change a New Yorker's life and move away from the carceral system as we see it right now.
Is it true that disabled New Yorkers are really getting much targeted by police?
Yes, NYPD's actually been sued by a group of disabled New Yorkers for their treatment. It's everything from deaf New Yorkers having their hands handcuffed behind their back so they can't sign, it's not having ASL interpretation there, it's if you're a blind New Yorker, them not helping you with your vision impairment. I've even heard anecdotal stories from people I've spoken to while putting the platform together, saying that, I'm deaf and I've been arrested and I've been, you know, told after the fact, people were yelling at me, you're dumb, you're stupid, why aren't you answering? I know you can hear me. And that was a deaf New Yorker that just didn't have the support they needed. So the NYPD has been sued for this. Also, it's largely about behavioral disabilities. When you think about someone with autism, how they may react in the moment versus how somebody else may, police aren't equipped to handle that, there isn't the training in place for it. And so policing issues within the disability community are very large. I'll actually, most likely, fingers crossed, I'm working with an advocate now to put out a platform specifically on the intersectionality of policing and disability justice.
Thank you for all of that information, it's great. Let's move on to Roosevelt Island questions. So, there's no oversight of RIAAC by the New York City Council or anyone else due to it being a New York State, New York State Public Benefit Corporation? What can you, as a New York City Council member representing Roosevelt Island, do to monitor RIAAC's actions and make sure they're operating at the best, in the best interest of the island?
Absolutely. So the quasi-public-private partnership between the state and RIAAC, it really impacts Roosevelt Islanders, because I, as council member, wouldn't be able to take all of the bites at that apple. I would have to be a part of a bully pulpit with our state-elected officials to call for accountability, demand the oversight we need long-term. I would like to see a change to RIAAC, I would like to see us have full city control over Roosevelt Island. I think that would better serve the residents of Roosevelt Island in terms of budget, in terms of just day-to-day service and care, quite honestly. But unfortunately, the city's powers, our hands are kind of tied when it comes to oversight. And it's really about being a bully pulpit, being a check on the system, and also, being sure that I'm there to meet needs in other areas. You know, I know very often Roosevelt Island won't see the budget funds that they need, they won't see the housing that they need built, and those are all things that the city can control and that I, as a council member, would be able to have a more active hand in while working with our state allies to be sure that we have the accountability. And we have some more stringent oversight mechanisms for RIAAC as well.
Does anybody see the housing that they need?
Nobody does. That's a problem with New York, right?
Let's talk about the transportation. Is there any transportation, additional transportation that you could think of that would, that we could do on Roosevelt Island?
Well, the ferry is already there now, which is great. I know City Bike is opening up as well, which is wonderful. I can't physically bike, but I understand some New Yorkers really like to, and that's great for them. I want to be more specific, though, with the transit, with the subway. So the F train is there, it's really great. But we know the subway issues that often plague the entire system, for long waits, for signal delays, for train crowding. So I want to see more service put into that station, because it's also an accessible stop, which is unique. We have so few of them in the system, and so to be sure that we have the access and more trains running regularly there as well. Also, buses, the free buses on Roosevelt Island, I love when I go there and I can take a bus around to go from one park to the other, I love it. So just being sure that we have more bus service as well for quicker pickups and more rapid transport.
How about getting us the free, free transfer on this ferry?
That would be amazing. That, and also, if we could get the tree free, if I can speak, free transfer for the Astoria side too. I would love to see that, because I think so many people come from Queens to Roosevelt Island, come from Manhattan to Roosevelt Island, and having that free transfer for all would just benefit the island all around, bring more people to it, support local businesses, and just let people see the gem that is Roosevelt Island. I feel like I'm always out there talking, like, have you guys been to Roosevelt Island? It's so beautiful, there's a lighthouse on the island, and so many people don't know. It's like a real hidden gem here.
So you're talking about somebody taking a subway over to the ferry and then getting on the ferry and coming to Roosevelt Island? That's, that's a new concept. Okay. So and and senior discounts on the ferry?
That. And also, I want to see disabled discounts. So we do so much for veterans and students, and I think we need to do more for seniors and disabled New Yorkers as well. So that's definitely a part of it for me.
Right. Right. All right. So do you know about the the long effort before you were on the, on the community board, the ULP at for Cornell was a long process and a big community deal, where we had meetings with hundreds of people showing up at, you know, at the, at the, at the meetings for, you know, hundreds of residents showing up. And, you know, we really made sure that Cornell trucked and 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 built and with the, they barged, trucked, didn't truck, they barged instead. And so we didn't have trucking going up and down Main Street. And we have a long list of of wants, you know, that is engraved in the, in the lease with the city. So will you make a pledge that you will, you will continue to be, to make sure that Cornell is a good neighbor and honors all those, those that lists?
Absolutely, absolutely. So it did predate my time on the community board, but I am familiar of a lot of the issues with Cornell and the development through my union work. Cornell had to really be dragged to the table, kicking and screaming, to do some workforce requirements when they were getting public land and a lot of our tax dollars to build. So I'm, I'm absolutely looking for accountability on the Cornell side, because I know how difficult it was all around to work with them.
You know, Cornell is actually going to be building again. There are three areas that they're actually building in.
Yeah.
Was, yeah, they built the first one. They're shortly going to be building the second one, and then they'll build the third one. So again, we're going to have major construction in this community. We were able to literally force them to do the, the barging the last time around. What can we count on from you in terms of protecting the community from all the trucking and all the noise that that's going to take place on the next go round?
Well, I would want to see what happened for the first phase of development be mirrored for barging. I don't think Roosevelt Island roadways can take the large-scale construction trucks. I just think of concrete trucks rolling down Main Street, and that's a nonstarter for me, quite honestly, for the small character of the street, the safety, so many children around, so many families is out enjoying. So I commit to you fully that whatever the community wants, I'll be there to fight right alongside you, rise in solidarity, and find a way to bring all parties together to where if it happens and we see this work go forward, I want it to be built union, I want it to be contextual with the community. But if that's not what the community wants, I'm not a rubber stamp on development ever, because I know the impacts it can have to harm communities as well. So I will follow your leadership and I will work hand in hand with you to be sure what Roosevelt Island wants is what happens on Roosevelt Island for this development.
The other issue with Cornell really has to do with the fact that we're not really getting any compensation for the efforts that we make in order to support them. And, you know, we were able to twist their arm to get $400,000 a year. We have a, I think, a $23 million budget. Am I correct, Ellen? Is it 23 or 27?
I'm not sure.
Our operating, our operating budget. It's either 23 or 27 million. But one way or the other, 400,000 out of 23 million is, you know, it's a fingernail. It's absolutely ludicrous. And what they have down there is not simply school, you know, if it was a major school and, you know, they were only educating people, then, you know, you cut them a break. But this is a think tank. And the thinkers down there are Citicorp, Tata, you know, all these major, multi-billion dollar corporations that are actually using our rent money, because we pay our rents, the rents pay our land leases, and the land leases support the services that they're tying into in order to live comfortably on Roosevelt Island. The city is getting rent tax. We're getting nothing back from the city. And that needs to stop. So my question to you is, what do you think that you can do in order to help us get a, you know, some element of distribution from that rent tax that's going to the city? City's not having to spend a dime out here. Normally, they get the rent tax, they have to provide services to the entity that's paying that rent tax. They're not doing that. They're giving away our services and collecting money on the other side. So what do you think can be done in order to stop that ridiculous drain on our budget?
Procurement reform, something that is very unsexy and something that a lot of people don't want to talk about, but procurement reform. This is when we give our tax dollars away in the form of direct monies, tax abatements, untaxed land, low taxes, where large corporate conglomerates, large developers, they get our public dollars to build, like you're saying, and they get to run away with the money. The city's then is left holding the bag, so to speak, where we don't have the money we need to intern fund services for Roosevelt Island, for the community at large. So I want to see really robust procurement reform enacted here at the city level and also at the state level, because the state has a lot more say in some of the tax abatements that happen, because that's where a lot of our tax law comes from. But I want to see some deep procurement reform that ends the practice of giving away our land, because a lot of that land that Cornell built on was also public land. So they're just eating at the public trough in so many different kinds of ways. Where you're getting our public land, you're getting our public tax dollars, then you don't have to pay taxes on the other side for X amount of years. So again, procurement reform, procurement reform, procurement reform. I've passed a whole bill in Albany on this to make sure that our public dollars have good job requirements on it. And it's something that we can do so much more, too, because honestly, when the government spends money, our tax dollars, that's one of the few times you can attach requirements of any kind. And that's community, that's workforce, environmental, anything. So procurement reform, big time.
So do you know what happened to the storm surge berm that the HHC was, had planned after Hurricane Sandy? About a year and then maybe two years after Hurricane Sandy, they came up with this great plan, this beautiful plan of like beachfront property and, you know, berm that was gentle sloping down to the waterfront. And then we never, we, we approved it and never heard about it again.
So this predates my time on the community board, and I've actually, so after I saw your list of questions, I've been trying to do a bunch of research and find out where the berm is, because Roosevelt Island right now at South Point Park, the government's funding a lot of resiliency updates for the southern portion of the island. But what about the northern portion? What's happening there up by Kohler, where, yes, we have the lighthouse, we have Lighthouse Park, but you already see the erosion on the Esplanade. When you're on the Manhattan side and you look to Roosevelt Island, and then vice versa. So I do not have any new insights shed on this for you, other than that there was a plan in place, the plan was approved, and now it's just somewhere on a shelf gathering dust, which is really unfortunate, because there's so many conversations happening right now around the climate crisis and resiliency. And for me personally, I want to see a five borough resiliency plan, which absolutely has to include things like the berm and revitalizing our natural shorelines, because that's what's going to protect us from the next Hurricane Sandy, where we know it's going to happen, there's no way to avoid it. All we can do is prepare ourselves for it right now. And sadly, a lot of the resiliency planning has just been targeted on lower Manhattan, the Brooklyn waterfront, parts of Staten Island. And that's what's causing a lack of service, a lack of the infrastructure work to better protect our communities here in the fifth district.
What I'm very worried about is that somebody made a decision that they're, that maybe they want to get rid of Kohler. And that's why they're not doing the berm, because they don't care about Kohler. You know, they just, you know, just let it sit there until they decide what to do about it. But it really protects the hospital, you know, the berm. The hospital has to be protected because it's low-lying land. And if we have another big hurricane, they're going to flood again. And, you know, and then they're going to have the same, those patients who've really gone through a lot, they've really suffered.
And also already, I'm sure it's happened to all of you, when you're walking on the Esplanade, and it's high tide, and the water is already splashing up and over, you see the spray. And that's not during a storm surge. That's just a regular day for us here in the community. So the fact that we're not seeing the work done, Ellen, I do agree with you that it is possibly a purposeful oversight, where long term, they're just hoping that they won't have to do this work and Kohler will go away. But Kohler's there, and we need to be sure that we're protecting Kohler, especially their residents right now that have been locked inside for a year. And I can't imagine the mental toll that that's taking on so many people.
So you are an organizer. You organize a protest that might get us the berm.
I can. I mean, I did eight months organizing in the community. I can do it.
Exactly. Okay, one, it just, just, I just want to point out one thing, and then we've got to close. The, the waste treatment plant?
91st Street Transfer Station. Yep.
The Marine Transfer Station is just across the river from Kohler Hospital. And when we get high tide, or we get, we get, you know, like a storm surge, that crap from that Marine Transfer Station swashes into our basements. So we really, you know, this is a real problem for us. If we don't have, you know, if 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 they continue, if 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 we don't have enough, if we don't have enough warning, and they can't clear the garbage out of the Marine Transfer Station, that garbage is coming into our basement. So.
Yeah, I agree. And that's, to me, that's also part of long-term planning for the community. We need to take all of these issues into account. We can't just pretend like, oh, when a storm comes, we'll say, take your go bag that we gave you for free at the council office, and now be on your way. There's a lot more planning that needs to go into it. And planning for the MTS is definitely a part of it, because also, what do we do if there are large-scale trucks there, and then we're in the middle of a storm surge? What if, what do we do if all of the refuse hasn't been put away? If it's in the process of being barged out, like you're talking about when a storm hits? So there are so many, so many issues with the Marine Transfer Station that we need to be working on. One of the big ones for me is pedestrian safety. When they take that little hairpin turn, I live on 92nd Street, so I'm walking over there all the time with my dog. When those trucks take that little hairpin turn to get down 91st Street, it just makes me so nervous.
Yeah.
Yeah. So Rebecca, thank you so much for joining us this evening. I think it's been enlightening for everybody. And folks, I just want to remind you that your vote is your voice. And make sure that you use your vote, your your voice loud and clear on June 22. And this coming Wednesday, our guest will be Chris Sosa, who is also a candidate for city council, and will be starting again at 8 o'clock on Wednesday. So for everybody here this evening, thank, to everyone here this evening, thank you very much for joining us. Thank you, Rebecca. And it's time to extinguish our torch for the next time. Good night, everybody.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Good night.